All approved, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
This is like my favorite, that's my favorite meeting to.
Who didn't sign in for that one?
You can.
Didn't sign in for this one, actually. I gotta sign in for this one.
Oh. Board of review?
Board of.
This is, this is the Board of Trustees, so that's, that's the one you need to sign.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's hard to keep track.
Oh, man.
So much terminology. What do we get into?
Yeah. Something like that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it was really, it was.
Chuck, why did you hide it?
Um, our nephew Sid, since they were 13 years old, had always wanted to go to Japan. And Sid is our godchild. And so he said he'd.
He puts sunscreen only on the left side of his face.
You know, about paying attention and that stuff, and we lived.
Okay, we're gonna get started here.
We're gonna take you to the plan. So.
Like, you ready, Lisa?
And we had it all planned for 2020.
Okay.
They probably got a lather up there.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees, the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of May 28th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bryno.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitwer.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Krist.
Blackwood.
Here.
McNally.
Here. We could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Lisa, can you give us a status report on the posting of this meeting?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community, Center of the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, all right. Uh, let's get started here with public comment. Anybody wish to, to make a comment, make a statement here before we get into the meeting? Okay.
Just a question, clarification, instead of there generally being public comments for Highway 134, I could validate later?
For the median, if you want to talk about the 134.
Well, that's just for the median?
Yeah, so.
Three minutes, three minutes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm Blake Solberg, today representing the Vineyards of Cambridge Homeowners Association. Couple of items related to the developer's agreement between the village and the vineyards, LLC, whatever they're called. There are a couple of things which the developer had obligations to, the ways the HOA wanna make sure are getting enforced. One, I know there's been a lot of talk about connecting the subdivision to Highway 134. There are very clear developer obligations to the developer's agreement, further supported by amendments, where maybe the clarification of that has changed, acceleration, deceleration, getting de-scoped, but still the obligation to connect and move Lagoon Road to align with Highway 134, which I understand has been kind of the at issue here, whether it's with DOT approvals, what have you. But that will be a requirement of the developer's obligation, so making sure that that gets upheld. You guys do have things like tax incentive agreements over the next 17 years that you guys are probably in the middle of with them. These are things that can be withheld. They have these obligations, you can be an injured party if we don't get that commitment from the developers. And then also too, they do have very clear park requirements also within that developer's agreement, which also continues to be undeveloped. We continue to hear that the village doesn't have funding for that, but that is a developer obligation, which would be credited by the village through that TIA instrument within the agreement. So those are the two things that are on the HOA's mind, in addition to the third thing, which we'll talk about later, about median repair. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lund, if you can come up, introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Dean Lund, resident of Village of Cambridge. Sidewalks, now that QuickTrip's coming in, we've kinda got the West Side Vineyard area. I'd like to see us look at a site or a crosswalk at that intersection, so the village and the vineyards can reach our new development on that project. I know it's been mentioned, I don't know where it's at, but I don't see any crosswalks set in that intersection. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting with public comment, move on. Approval of the consent agenda. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
Okay, motion to second discussion. Any corrections, issues for Lisa? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carries unanimously, good job. All right, moving into reports, President's Report. Two things. What was it last, when did I call you, Friday? We had another storm, and seemed to be on a regular basis for severe activity. We had a tree that fell on Water Street. It was in private property, and it fell across the terrace out onto the street. And I saw that, and I actually, I tried to get a hold of you, and then I ended up calling into the county, and the county had already known about it, because it would've had to been taken out, and it was the next morning. So it was down there by the Willerup Church. And I think we had some others, and you'll probably be talking about that. The other thing here, I just wanted to briefly mention, and Paul, I could use some help on this, 'cause I saw you there yesterday, was the Memorial Day Parade and the celebration, and the pancake breakfast, and the parade itself, and then the more formal presentation up at Veterans Park was just a wonderful, wonderful day. The weather broke, we started having sunlight right around, if I'm not mistaken, it was 10 o'clock. And it was, it was gorgeous. I know we had another record number of people that were there. They were picking up candy for hours afterward, and no problems, no complications with anything. It was a very well-attended event, and went through without any, any glitches.
So, I, yeah, I think it was very well, thanks to the fire department for doing the breakfast, very well-attended. My husband and I kept looking from our house going, "We're waiting for the line to go down, and then we'll walk down and get in line." And finally, we were like, after an hour, we're like, "All right, let's just get in line, 'cause it's just, the line's just not going down." So it was nice to see all the people there, and then thanks to the Lions Club for the parade. Very well getting everybody through and quick. I heard some comments that it went a little bit quicker than last year, and just the speed of the actual parade a little bit for the people who were walking it, which was good, because that helps us to reduce the amount of time that a state highway is closed down, so that's fantastic. And then the program at the park that the Lions Club put on as well was, was great. And the Dirty, Dirty Heathens, I think we're playing, and it was always good to hear them, local band, so.
There was one minor safety issue, and I'm not sure what to do with it. I'll just tell you now, Todd, the extension cords that were running through the park with the Lions Club for them to be set up, you, you could walk on it, and they were in the grass, and I don't know what to do about that. You know, I know at Christmas time, they can get covered up with snow, but this time of the year, they are orange or yellow, and, you know, they get in the grass.
Things just stand to the other side.
Yeah, I, I thought of that, too. So we might have to.
They're closing the road anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the concern would be closing north, that section of North Street versus that section by the bank. And I think it, I, I know they chose that side street for a specific reason. We'd have to talk to the Lions about why.
They're not closing, not closing North Street.
Yeah.
North Street is a.
Correct.
For the parade to come up and through.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think that's why they put the.
And the bank, the bank's not open either.
Correct, so that's why I think they put it on that side.
And it works better.
Runners or rocks and tack them down over the course.
Yep, yep. We can just, we can talk to the Lions Club about that for next year. Yep.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's my, my report. Any questions? Okay, Todd, come on up and introduce yourself here.
Evening, Todd, Public Works, Cambridge, Wisconsin, Director. Highland, Highland is repaired. We got it repaired for $25,000. We were gonna chip seal it, wedge it and chip seal it, and instead we got an overlay on it for $5,000 more. We got an inch and a half overlay on it, and it looks, it's looking good. It's a new type of mix, it's a cold mix style thing that they're doing now. It looks, it looks awesome.
It was, we took our motorcycles on it, it was wonderful. It's a wonderful motorcycle road, we wish the whole road was that way.
That was amazing. He, he didn't, didn't say when he was gonna have it done, he had it done the next day after I signed the contract, so.
Wow, it's very nice.
Yes. Flowers, flowers and everything are up on Main Street. We did a lot of work with the Lions Club and set everything up, so all they had to do was come up along the road and just throw their cones out, stuff like that. And Lee was a big part of that, Lee of Public Works. And. And I, I'm done with my sidewalk inspections, so we'll have to, we'll have to go through that and figure out what we're gonna do there. Running a little bit behind on things right now, 'cause we're, we had to clean up from, from the parade and stuff like that, so we still have stuff to, obviously, to pick up, yard waste and such things. QuickTrip is gonna run a little bit behind. They had to, we went to a, to a construction opening thing, and they had to get rid of some of the, some of the garbage dirt that was laid there, that shouldn't have been laid there, and they had to add, add eight feet of, eight feet of dirt there that they could work with. So they're like, they're running like a month behind or something like that. I think that's about it. Oh, and the trees, those trees that went down, that one tree that went down up here over by the park. Christiana's the one that even let me know, he's the one that called me this morning and let me know that he shoved that tree over. There's another tree over down at Billstod, on Billstod's, that's on the town of Christiana. So he, he came over and shoved that over, but nobody had called the emergency number. We have to call the emergency number, it's, just call the office, and it automatically goes to the emergency thing, and, and whoever's on duty will automatically do their thing. So we have to, we have to remember to do that, 'cause I gave you the number, and I can give anybody else the number if they, if they need the number. So all you had to do is call the office if, if you don't know the number, or I'd like, again, I can give you the phone number.
How are we doing with lawn mowing? Have you had any time to do that with the weather?
We've been dodging in and out.
Yeah, okay.
Right now, we're just trying to play catch-up, because, you know, we, we weren't here Monday, so.
It's going okay.
And then, I'm sorry, any special plans for, with Fire Fest with?
Because we won't have another Village Ward meeting before Fire Fest, so just.
God, that's right.
Getting the park ready, getting all that kind of stuff, any concerns about?
I have no concerns. We, we'll make sure the tables are over there. I usually take all, the majority of the picnic tables from, from Veterans Park and bring them over there for, bring them over to West Side for that weekend. The only thing that concerns me is if it doesn't quit raining. Steve Strass got almost stuck down in the, down in the hole down there, so. And that, that, you shouldn't drive any vehicles on that at all, anyway. That's, you know, that's an ice skating rink in the wintertime, and it's just not, we're, we're pumping water out of there continuously. And right now, with the water being up, you can't, you can't keep up with it. So the water's staying right, right in the, with the ground, so. That's where we're at with water right now.
I'm just keeping, yeah, I'm just thinking that if you drive enough for a couple days, you can mow, you can, you know, do that kind of stuff.
Well, that's what we've been doing.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
We're ducking and dodging in there. We had one guy gone.
Down there mowing.
We had one guy gone for two weeks, he went to England, so.
Cool.
Now he's back and.
Done, good.
Okay, any other questions for Todd?
Um, just a reminder that the compost area is now open, from what time to what time?
The hours are eight, eight to two from.
Eight to two.
On Tuesday, Tuesday through Thursday.
Okay.
And then Friday, it's open all day, Saturday, it's open all day.
Okay, super.
Then it's closed up on Sunday, and then it doesn't open again until Tuesday.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking that.
We're, we're gonna take some of our own instead of making you get all up.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Todd, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on, Village Office Updates, Lisa.
Well, what Todd said, yeah. We always have, Public Works have on-call phones, so somebody is always on-call. That is the phone number to call when there's emergencies, or call myself, and I can get in touch with whoever. The parade and stuff, also, when I think, like Todd said, Public Works did a lot to help get it ready. The police have been very instrumental, too. We've got the forms down now for the state road closures and so forth, so Chad has worked with us a lot on getting those ready, so it kind of was a, a big group effort where we really have things in order now, easy for following years to submit the same paperwork and so forth. Finalizing the April election. The audit, they keep having little straggling questions, so that's nearing completion. Alcohol licenses, all renewals are due this week, so that'll be before the licensing committee later this month, and on the agenda at the end of June. Little trickier this year, the state came out with all new forms right before the licensing schedule, so reviewing everything as they come in to make sure everything is completed. Lot of ongoing projects, a lot of which are on the agenda tonight, either for action or updates. So continuing on a lot of projects. The water rate increase will be in effect with the reading that will be done this week for May usage, so it will show in the June bills. We have sent out press releases, it's on the website, so if people have questions. Tammy's been working hard updating the website, it's almost fully updated, so that will be ready to switch over from the old to the new officially pretty soon. Getting the last of the stuff on there. Been spending a lot of time prepping Tammy, I'll be in and out of the office a lot over the next three weeks, so filling her in on all the ongoing projects, things for future agendas, the licensing, everything that's going on right now, so, thank you. It's gonna be a long couple of weeks, but a lot going on right now.
Okay. Questions for Lisa? All right, okay, thank you, Lisa. We can move into the bills here and a Treasurer's Report. So, Tammy.
On the sheet that went around, highlighted all the bills over 5,000. The first run of bills was $54,142.24. The second run was $25,375, for a total of $79,517.24. I'll make it multiply the bills to the amount of $79,517.24.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion and questions in the bills.
Can you just give us a recap of the big-ticket items?
Sure. Bear Insurance, that was $83.90.25. MSA Professional Services, that was $13,018.50. Stafford Rosenbaum, $9,844.88. Village of Deerfield for our police contract, $13,587.74. And $25,000 to Scott Construction for Highland Drive.
I did, I did have a question on the Stafford and Rosenbaum one. The Campos and McFarland line item, I don't know what those are for. It says court, court legal word?
Oh, so courts, so the court does pay for those expenses if there's items that need, that the judge needs attorney assistance on, so.
And now that you mention it, I see the different line item number.
Yeah.
That's, that's, it's 399 instead of the.
Yeah, so it is for courts.
So that's the court area. Perfect, thank you. Now, next time I see that, I will know what that means.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
For roads, we budgeted 30,000, right?
Correct.
We're at 29 to red a budget?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We have just a little bit left.
Cool. If we weren't planning on doing anything else with that money, okay, all right, so red a budget.
The priority was.
Island, yeah, absolutely. Okay, nice work.
And then the RFP will be going out for this and that separate, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitwer.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Krist.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Bryno.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Tammy, you also gave us our own internal financials.
Yes.
What can you tell us about these?
Well, you've got on there budget versus actual through April 30th. And if there's any questions that any of you have. Well, Paula asked me for maybe the next meeting to go through, and since we'll almost be at the six-month mark, actually, at that point, we can take, I can highlight maybe some areas of things that we need to pay attention to more, just to give you a tipping point a little bit more, but I'll, I'll do that the next time we do this.
That'll be very helpful, thank you, Tammy.
Any other questions on the materials that Tammy included in our packet?
Are we going over in any, like way over in any particular area? I'm not seeing anything.
Not, not super over?
And, and that's, and that's Chuck where I asked Tammy if she could let us know at the next meeting.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't wanna swing it on her tonight, saying, "Where is this one?" I wanted to give her a heads up, so.
I'm just kinda looking, I'm looking at Public Works.
Yeah.
It looks good.
Yeah, we've been, Todd and I have been working quite a bit on trying to keep everything in Public Works in line, there's a few little overages. What's that? Yeah, I do. Don't, nope, can't do that. But, yeah, I mean, we've been working close, 'cause that's one of our big categories.
Yeah, for sure.
But, I mean, if we need to move a little bit around in that such category, I mean, it's okay if it's a little over and a little under here and there, it's if we're changing categories, it's where we need to pay attention, yeah.
Nice work.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, thank you very much, Tammy. Let's move on to our item eight, Unfinished Business, specifically 8A, Koshkana and Crick Update. I got a feeling this is you, Jane.
This could really be an update for those of you who weren't present at the last meeting, because I really just took your direction and drafted a sternly worded letter.
That's right.
So that.
Sternly worded, wow!
So asking, asking the Drainage Board to pay for the costs of removing the trees using our floodplain ordinance as authority. One of the things I added to the letter was that, look, they have special assessment authority because this project was for the benefit of district owners, really, they're supposed to assess those costs back. We don't have similar tools, because the project wasn't for the benefit of village residents, and so. Then for the specific ask, I said, look, you know, we didn't have any costs to, to even share with them what they were, so I said if you'd like to just meet as, as a next step, just meet to discuss how we'll, how we'll remove the trees. I didn't get into this in the letter, but there are concerns that Todd raised in the last, in the last meeting about some of the infrastructure underneath the, the trees, so we don't wanna go in there necessarily with heavy equipment and just start, just start bulldozing out, so we'll, we'll need to be precise and, and just think about, about how to do it, so. That's all I have on that.
Has that letter gone out?
No, not yet. I just sent it, or I just put it to my assistant today.
Okay. Or maybe we can plant some fast-growing things that'll cover it all up with green, I don't know.
All right.
Yeah.
It's been looking awfully pretty down.
The blocks right now.
The fly out of the blocks is really pretty, yeah.
Bamboo.
Yes, bamboo.
All right, anything else for Jane on the Crick Update? Okay. B, Fire Commission Update, payment of the second half of the second quarter fire and EMS. Who wants to run with that? Chris, or is that?
Well, we have a meeting set, I just got an agenda yesterday for the 29th. We have to have, per the IGA, we have to have a meeting to elect officers, so there will be one in Oakland at 1800 on the 29th. So that is the latest update there.
Which is 6:00 PM for people that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, it's 6:00 PM, sorry. And so that is the, the latest, everything that I receive, I filter through Lisa, and I'll put a little remark on there, hey, distribute this to the board members, keep them as informed as possible, so. And she's been pretty diligent about that, so you, you know what I know. Any questions for me? Anything you want me to share at that Fire Commission meeting?
I got a couple of questions on the agenda, Chris.
Yep.
One of them is, they talk about the March 28th minutes. There was issue or question about whether Mr. Smith Beck should have been making decisions or whatnot. Do you have any idea how that's gonna affect the minutes?
I guess the, my question is, was he duly elected by his, his, you know, board or whatever the case is, and I believe now he has.
Right.
As for the timeline of that, it's, it's beyond me right now, because there's no minutes.
Right.
That I, that I can pull up.
And, and I'm, have been a little confused, because there have been resignation letter, or letters from Mark Hook saying, "I will be, you know, stepping down." One letter said effective immediately, and the next said effective when a new president is appointed, so. So, I don't know when...
Would you take the first letter he sent, which is effective immediately?
That was, I mean, it's probably up to the, to the commission to decide how that, how that should work.
Didn't one say, like, leave of absence versus resignation?
And he'd be filling in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's confusion there.
But, yeah, one said effective immediately and one said upon approval of a new president. So, who will be voting in the officer portion of the meeting, I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
But...
Guess we'll find out on the 29th.
And there was discussion for your closed session. It says discussion of draft collective bargaining agreement and draft of proposed intergovernmental agreement.
I would imagine that has to do with what, what we submitted to the municipalities for the intergovernmental agreement? Some municipalities have had issues with it.
That shouldn't be discussed there. That shouldn't be discussed there because the EMS commission has no standing for what that intergovernmental agreement is.
Right.
Jane?
I think the attorney is on board with that. I'm surprised that it was in, in the minutes because we didn't submit that to the commission. The attorneys didn't submit that to the commission because we intentionally called it a discussion among the municipalities. And I thought, I thought everybody agreed with that, but...
Because are we still having a five municipality meeting?
So, I mean, the update that I have, so we have, Michael Van Clunen on behalf of Oakdale and I, we're asking the other attorneys for the municipalities to meet to discuss so that we could have a more productive meeting of all the municipalities where we had gone through some of it. So, we didn't have to all get out our red lines at a, at a big meeting. So, that, we scheduled that for next Tuesday, a week from today, except that Eric Larson, who represents the town of Christiana and Lake Mills, has said that he thinks that's premature and he doesn't have authorization to participate in that. So, I, I think we're going to go ahead with the town of Rockdale attorney, just because we don't think we can put, push that off any, any further. So, the three of us at least are, are planning to meet on Tuesday.
Is that an open session?
No, it's just, it's not a meeting of governmental entities. It's just the three attorneys.
So, on the agenda for the next commission meeting, is there anything on there about getting costs into control?
There is.
I guess if there isn't, can you get something on there? I mean, it seems like they need to...
The only thing I've seen is treasurer's report. I don't think it talks at all about...
There's just bleeding money all over the place.
Yeah, I don't think it, there's...
I don't see anything on there either.
Anything on here about it?
Just, there's the treasurer's report and then review and approve bills scheduled to be paid. That's the only financials that it looks like is on there.
Yeah, there was a change.
Get that on the agenda and somehow stop the bleeding. At least understand the bleeding.
Yeah, I don't see any. Because we should be coming into a 2025 budget here soon, discussion, right?
And then, so, question, Jane. Can the collective bargaining agreement, does that have to come back to the five municipalities?
That is our position. So, I know that Michael Hahn disagrees with that, but yes, we think, at the very least, it's up to the, somebody like Chris to say, I need to take this back to my municipality.
That was my intent.
So, that, that was his, that's what he was going to do once it's presented. Michael hasn't been willing to share the draft with me for review, so I will wait for Chris to do that because if he can do that, that can be his request as a commission member.
Okay.
And there's going to be an election of the officers at this next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Of the commission?
One thing I would like to point out is paragraph 10 on the, the updated IGA. If you could just take a look at that and see if we can discuss that. Because that's proving to be a point of contention and it has to do with the volunteer fire department. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. The other agenda item on here is about the sales agreement or contract and who's going to sign it for the tender. Chief, was it you who said at the commission meeting?
Yes, when I got the donations, it was stated that the fire department would be taking care of the transaction of the chassis and the truck. But then it would be, it would be the fire department's truck, commission's truck. And that was a stipulation of, of the donors. So...
So, the question is, do we have to vote on that? Yeah. That's... Because I think how it works is it's regardless of any donations, grants, anything else, it's still a commission entity, right? So, so we still have to approve it and we'd be, I guess, foolish not to approve it with, with the donation that, the charitable donation that was made, so... But I think it's more of a matter of administrative protocol.
Gotcha. Okay.
Where is it now? Where's the tender at right now?
Right now, it's actually sitting at Christiana Town Hall just because of our breakfast yesterday. Took it out of the station, so we had more room.
Right.
So, right now, it's sitting at Christiana Town Hall.
This doesn't require anything at the municipal level, then?
No.
Okay. All right. Something that does, though, is this payment of our second half due?
Actually, there's one other thing I would like to consult the board with. There was a mediation that happened with a complaint that was put in through the Department of Workforce Development against myself and Ms. Palinkas. The complaint, I, I didn't get to go to the mediation. I don't know why I was not invited, but I didn't. It was Mr. Cook and Ms. Palinkas. They went back and forth. Initially, Mr. Blount wanted a full payout of his, of his contract. Media, as mediation goes, it went back and forth and back and forth. I think they agreed to something along the lines of $17,000 or close to that. I would like some input from the board to be able to bring that back for a board decision as opposed to a commission decision. Because otherwise, if we do that, it's just automatically going to open up the floodgates for complaints. I think it's, you know, I think it should see its way through the Department of Workforce Development's process rather than the insurance company saying, okay, well, here's, here's a lump check. And because I think it's going to empower complaints moving forward.
Can you back up a little bit? Who was this meeting with?
Before we do that, I'm wondering, are we getting beyond what we have for an agenda? And is this something that we do need to talk about? But can we do that at this meeting at this time?
It's under the auspices of fire commission update and I'm updating you.
I do think we do have an update on here. It's a great question. I think there is an update generally and then it's not only confined to the, the payment of the second half of the second quarter dues. Is that how you intend it?
Yeah, the update is always on there for the board to give.
We just...
Back and forth for Chris as the rep to give information and the board to give. Yeah.
So, yeah, that's sort of a separate agenda item in addition to the sub B1 there to make sure that we hit on the payment of the second half of the, of the second quarter dues.
So, we can talk about this?
I think it's fair to talk about it.
My, so back up? You wanted me to back up? Go ahead.
Who was the meeting?
It was with the insurance company of the, of the fire and EMS commission. It was with their mediators.
So, it, it, it didn't have anything to do with workforce development? It wasn't a workforce development mediator?
It was, the, the subject of it was an FMLA claim. That's how it ended up with workforce development.
Right.
Who's the parties then?
But, I mean, were there any findings that it actually was?
I can show you what the findings were. I have it copied right here.
Because it seems to me that the validity of the claim, as the term you just used, the validity of the claim wasn't even established, so why would we have settled?
Chris and I talked about that at length. We, we came down on the same, at least I've, I asked the employment lawyer expert at my firm to just look at the complaint and give me her opinion about whether there could be any merit. She did not think that there could be just based on the applicability of FMLA to the commission. She, so, so I advised Chris that if, if there's a chance to vote, he should vote no. Probably, he might, at least based on that, on that very concern, that there, there needs to be at least a case on its face where the, the complaint could prevail before it makes any sense to settle. And especially to settle in a way that could increase our insurance rates as, as the municipalities.
So, the settlement is they would withdraw the charges if he's paid $17,000?
I think so. We have very limited information about, about this because...
I wasn't allowed to go.
Chris, when you said the findings, is that findings from DWD are just the mediator and the insurance?
I believe that's D, is that DWD? Who's signature on it? This is from the insurance company, Mulhern.
So, not DWD has not...
I don't think there were ever any DWD findings that the, that the case had merit on its face. From the documents that I saw, there were no findings. It was the insurance company offering to settle. And in fact, by the time Chris saw it, by the time the commission members saw the settlement offer, it had already been presented to the other side.
So, so that didn't even go before the commissions to intermediation on it? Mark Cook just decided to do that all on his own?
It was...
It couldn't have because it wasn't on any agendas.
It was the DWD hearing. They had the hearing and it, the insurance company presented that to, from what I understand, to pop out the same day as the hearing.
But the hearing showed no findings?
The hearing that we haven't gotten...
It sounds, from what I know of and what we can find on the website, we don't see any finding of, that there was a, a statement on its face that this, that there were merits there, so that it should proceed further. The only thing that we have seen is the offer to settle. So, it...
So, the meeting did occur?
Mm-hmm.
Why would we settle if there's no...
And then, and then here is the, the response, and I'll just read it out loud. "As a result of the matters addressed above," which this one is to do with FMLA, "there is no merit to the claim made by the complainant nor any basis to hold the respondent responsible for the actions of which the complaint, complaint complains."
So, there was no merit, so why did we settle?
Yeah. And then, for the other complaint, it states the base, basically the same thing. So, I give a copyright.
So, was there a decision to settle or did, was it still going to come be at a future agenda?
I imagine it's probably what's going to be discussed in closed session during our, our next meeting on the 29th. But I need, I need to know from our board. I, I personally would like to bring it back to the municipalities to vote on this because it's going to open up floodgates and, and it's, you know...
And it wasn't even clear whether this settlement would dismiss the other claims that are pending or it would, I mean, in the very least, that should be, there should be some perclusive effect of any settlement.
Except there's, yeah.
But those are other people. Complaints are other people in some cases.
These are the Blount complaints.
I mean...
And another complaint has been filed since that.
Right.
From Mr. Blount?
No.
Oh.
My opinion, Chris, would be that, that shouldn't, accepting that shouldn't be a commission decision because it's going to impact the amount of money that the municipality is going to have to pay for insurance.
Right.
So, it's really on the municipalities to make that choice. If, if they don't agree, I would, I would say you should vote no, that, that we don't, that I don't think the Village of Cambridge should accept that mediation.
Right, okay.
Result.
I agree.
That's agreed. That's...
It's a big bogus complaint with no merits of...
Meritless.
Does not deserve to be...
I mean, there's a question of whether or not FMLA even applies because of the number of employees that are employed by the commission. So, I mean, that's...
I would like to just see the process out.
That's pretty cut and dry.
Department of Workforce Development. But Department of Workforce Development sees the process out.
Yeah.
As opposed to just the insurance company coming in and saying, okay, well, we'll give you this lump sum and, and then everything goes away, but it won't go away.
When was this meeting?
I'm not sure exactly when it was. Couple of weeks ago, actually.
Before Mark Cook resigned, or after?
It was before he resigned because he was actually there at the, at the meeting with Sheila.
And you were named in the complaint, but you were not...
I was named in both complaints, but I didn't, I didn't get my day in court.
Asked to participate.
Say what?
You were, you were named in both complaints, but you were not...
Right.
You did not participate in the mediation.
I, I made myself available, but I was not invited to that.
How is that fair?
Did you get...
That is not fair at all.
No.
He doesn't share his side of the story?
No.
That's, that's...
We have that split too.
The concerning correspondence that I saw was when the insurance company presented the offer to the commission members, they said, it's too late now. The ship has sailed. We've already presented this to Paul Blount.
That was the explanation?
For why, why the commission needed to approve the settlement.
So?
People acting outside of their, of what the IGA says they can do, doesn't mean they can do it.
If it was presented to him prematurely, then that's on the commission. That's not on the municipal, or whoever, Mr. Cook, whoever it was that did it.
So, Chris is going to make that point at the commission meeting when it comes up.
Chris, would it help if we were to formally act on this and to give you at this time specific instruction as to how we feel?
Yeah, I mean, it would definitely help, you know, going into that meeting, but I don't, I, I imagine some of the feedback I'm going to get is, well, it's just insurance company money. It's not coming out of the municipality. It, it does eventually. Our rates are going to go up and it's going to empower the complainants.
That's what I worry about is...
And so, it's, it's...
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I want to ask legal counsel, is it, can we sue? Is there a son that we can sue?
This is another example of something that could be a mandamus action. If we, if the argument is that, of course, this has to go to the municipalities and it's not, then it's, you know, if we want to take that step, that's the kind of thing that we would, that's, that would be the remedy.
At what point can we hold Mark Cook accountable for the decisions that he's making on behalf of the EMS that is not in his purview to do? How can we hold him personally responsible for this stuff? Because it's not ending.
And is it going to end even with the new commission member in it? You know?
Right. Or is he going to be pulling strings for the new commission member behind the scenes and it's still going to be awful?
Okay. Getting back to this particular issue.
Can Jane, can Jane ask my question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I do think the right legal action is, is the mandamus one, just to say, this, this was not discretionary. And it, we, that can be framed in many different ways, including to address the concerns that you're raising. But that's the kind of action that you would say. Look, you have certain, certain authority as a policymaker, but this was not within the bounds of that authority that you have.
Okay.
Anybody want to make a motion? I'll do it. I make a motion that we give Chris Brunig specific instruction regarding this issue of the payment of $17,000 to vote against this at the next... of the payment of seventeen thousand dollars to vote against this at the next meeting, and to make that clearly known by the commission that we are not in favor.
And, and that it should really be brought back to the municipalities to decide.
And that any further or any, any future issues involving financial outlay, you're going to get into significance on this. So I'm hedging on that one. But I'm going to go with just the first part. You know, we give you specific instruction not to support this.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Whitmer.
Yep.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Krist.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryanick.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay. That takes care of that.
Now, what about collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining needs to come back to the municipalities for approval. Because it's a contract, and they are not authorized, the EMS, the EMS commission is not authorized per the IGA to enter into contracts.
So the last time, did that come back to the municipalities for approval?
Nope.
Nope.
It didn't?
Did not.
And what did we do about that as a board? Nothing?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I asked in the last agreement for collective bargaining if those came back municipalities for approval. And the answer was, no, it did not. What did this board do about that? And then through the hearing, this board didn't do anything.
Well, we didn't do anything, because I don't think it was reported to us that they had entered in and done a collective bargaining agreement, because our representative at the time did not bring that back to the board.
And that's on discussion for tomorrow night, in your closed session.
Yeah. I mean, like Paula said, the IGA is clear, that they can't enter into agreement, so I would urge you to request them to follow the IGA, for whatever it's worth.
Do you want that as a motion, Paula, to come back to, that it has to come back?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, all right, I'll make a motion that we ask Chris to, or direct Chris to inform the EMS commission that the collective bargaining agreement should come back to the municipalities for, for approval. Period.
Second.
Yeah, per the IGA, good.
A second.
Okay.
Any questions on that, Chris? I think, I think we're just saying kind of what you said already at the beginning, so I think you're good on it.
It's always helpful to, to have the, the full board, you know, behind these decisions, so I don't get looked at like I have three heads when I bring it up, so.
Just three eyes, not three heads.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Do you want a roll call on this? Do you want to just?
The other one, voice vote, fine.
Voice vote.
Roll call.
Roll call? Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Krist.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryanick.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, is there anything else, Chris?
Well-
All right, now I'm going to flip it back to payment of the second half of the dues. Where are we at on this? We still owe them, right?
Yes, we paid the first half of the second quarter.
Okay. And this kind of came up at the last meeting, and there were four of us, and we kind of felt like, wait a minute, you know, we should probably be doing this, you know? I think it also failed. It was a two to two vote.
It was a tie.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, here we are.
We wanted to hear from the other, other members that were absent to, you know, what they, their thoughts were on it.
Well, sort of discussion. I'll make a motion to pay the remaining portion of our obligation for second quarter to EMS Commission.
Okay. We have a second?
I will second as long as you clarify that it's not just the EMS commission, and it's the Fire and EMS Commission.
Correct, yes, thank you.
So are we still waiting on financials from EMS? Is it the same, are we back where we were two months ago? That we were holding out?
Yeah, we still don't have a, a budget, you know, we still don't have-
There's been no progress?
No, we had a, we thought we were going to make some, make some hay at the last meeting, but it kind of got cut off short because of the tornado.
Oh.
So, but I guess that's a valid excuse, yeah, as excuses go.
I don't know, I don't understand why a tornado would have stopped the meeting, because you were all in a safe place, just continue the meeting. I mean, it's not like you all got in your cars and drove home, did you? Then there was a tornado? Oh my God.
But they just went home in front of these windows, you know, and they all stayed there.
That blows my mind.
The one question I have is, we know we have to pay it, otherwise we incur eighteen percent fees. So what happens in the beginning of July? When we're right back here in the same place?
Well, the, the glass is half-full in me, says we'll have new leadership.
True, true.
So, because we have an election of officers, so I, I would like to, to think that we would get our proverbial crap together and get the municipalities what they're asking for. But then the pessimistic part of me is like, you know, it's, who's that leadership going to be, and is it still going to be, you know, directed to, to hold out? I don't know. I think, I don't know why, and I, and I understand, Bill and Mark, you explained it, you know, in the best way possible, but I don't understand why we haven't sought an audit at this point. And I know that it is, it's expensive, but lawyers are expensive too, no, no offense, Jane, but, so, you know, let's figure out, let's get a, an audit, even if it's just one year, and figure out where we're at, so we can have a launching off point. But that's, that's my take on it, you know, come July.
Because what was twenty, twenty-three overage?
Three hundred and some, some odd thousand, mostly payroll.
Any idea where we're at right now?
I, I, no, not right now. Would have invited Sheila in if-
I mean, at some point, the commission is going to have to make the decision to cut back somewhere, because they're-
Yeah, Bill's right, we are bleeding, you know, we're just, so-
And this is where I'd be really careful about that collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah.
Not with, making sure that there's, because the commission is going to have to make hard decisions. I, I wonder if our EMS is a little bit overstaffed, or something's going on there, because they're the ones bleeding the money. So what's going on?
You know, there's this discussion, I think, was it Chief, or Mr. Blount, who said they have thirty members on their roster at the commission meeting last?
That's a very inflated number.
It is a very inflated number? Because my question is, if it was Sheila who was here in March, who said they had three hundred hours of overtime?
Yeah.
How if you have thirty quote unquote employees, do you have three hundred hours of overtime?
That doesn't, doesn't add up.
It doesn't add up.
So, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that has to be looked into there. So the eighteen percent interest, this, I hadn't heard that before, so where's, where, you might have talked about it in the last meeting, but what's-
What date does that take place?
The bill came out three ones, so it came out a month before the quarter started. I don't know if it's real clear in the IGA, if it's per the quarter, if it's per, I have concerns with the date they send the bill, because they could send us a bill tomorrow for the fourth quarter and say it's due, you know, which, is it realistic?
I think the best read is that it's at the end of the second quarter, the eighteen percent, but it's still on them to, to assert that they're owed that, because we still would take the position that they haven't done the duty, that they have to trigger our payment in the first place.
So, so I know we, I know part of the reason we withheld payment is because we wanted the EMS commission to make, take some sort of action. So, Mark, or Bill, sorry, would you be willing to adjust your motion to say contingent upon the, the May twenty-ninth meeting actually taking place of the Fire and EMS Commission? I mean, could we say that actually have to at least meet?
We have to have it, because we have to elect officers.
Well, well, sure.
They have to do lots of things that they have to-
Right, and, and then, and, and then they can just say, okay, we've elected officers, now let's adjust the agenda and get rid of everything else on the agenda.
Because it's, there is nothing-
Because they've done that, Chris, they've done that.
Yeah.
So-
I don't think us making that most, adding to the motion will have them have the meeting or not have the meeting. I think that's irrelevant to their decision-making process.
Well, if, if-
I think, and I also think we're, we've received the services, we're receiving the services, we have a contractual obligation to pay for those services, I believe. We're full members of that committee, we're exercising our rights on that committee, we're voting on that committee, we have representatives on that committee, we're acting, I think, not to pay it, we're not acting in good faith.
I have three things, and one is the interest rate and eighteen percent, and I, you know, we've got the money, we can make the payment, I don't want to see us paying that interest rate regardless of when it gets calculated. Number two, we're the only municipality, correct, Chris, that has not paid, so town-
In full, say paid in full, because we have paid half.
For, for the second quarter, we're the only ones that are still outstanding, have a lot outstanding. And I, I get it, where are we going to be at here with the third quarter, but we're the only ones. And then finally, I, I don't know where this place is at with that whole, the intergovernmental agreement, because if we're not paying, well then, are we in good standing? And we've already voted to leave, so it's like, well, we're, we're going to leave at the end of the year, and we're not going to pay you for what we're receiving during the year. And that's, that's the ugly part of this. So I, I'm still convinced that we need to pay this. I don't like at all what is going on. And I, I don't know what else to say. I, I do agree with you, Bill, that we can put in all kinds of, you know, additional language, but are they going to listen to us?
They're going to do what they want to do.
So, so what does it take to do a mandamus action, then?
You file in Circuit Court in Dane County, you file a petition. I know, I think we're there.
I kind of think we're there.
I mean, I think we've been there, but we're trying in good faith to let the commission do their jobs.
I'd like to see who gets elected as officers.
Well, that's the key right there.
The, the issue would be, do you have to have the mandamus act before the votes take place? Because I can go there as one person, and Mark, you've dealt with this before, and I can say Cambridge says we need to move this back to municipalities, the lawyer will be there, and they'll, he'll say, that's not the case, and I can get overruled. I can get overruled by both, not just the Mr. Blount situation, but also the collective bargaining. So we have to take that into consideration. You can't come in after the fact and do a mandamus, right?
Oh, you can. That would be the point of the mandamus action, is to say, look, here, the commission acted outside of the scope of its authority, disagree with the interpretation that it, that its legal counsel gave it about its mandatory duties. And it had a mandatory duty to, to bring contracts back to the municipalities.
Okay.
Would be the, if that were the particular claim. I mean, we've talked about lots of different options for occasions to bring mandamus actions, but that's a possible one. It's just to say, look, we have one interpretation, that David Hahn has a different one, Judge, which is it?
I think in, in also getting back to the, to the subject at hand, Bill, you bring up a really good point, is, that kind of works with me, is, is that we are getting the services. And that's, that's the part that, as much as I want to, I want to, you know, die on this hill, I'm not willing to die on this hill, because we are receiving, you know, outstanding service. So just like anything, we're, we should be willing to pay for that, so.
Does it help to tie, to say, okay, we agree, we're going to do our part with the IGA, you do your part, commission, with the IGA, and let the municipalities vote on contracts, and vote on anything that would affect their payment into the commission, of which both of these previous things that we talked about would.
Bless-
No, it would, you're right. Both of them have an impact onto what we'd have to pay into the commission. And, and, and it has an impact for this year, because if they run out of money this year, we still have to pay our share. So it's not like, oh, well, it's not going to apply to you guys, because you're not, you're not going to be here next year. Well, it's going to apply to us this year.
And it does state in the con, in, in the IGA that anything over five thousand dollars has to go back to the municipalities, right?
In addition to just anything that's a contract.
Right.
There's lots of good business, definitely.
Okay.
Okay. At the last meeting, Paula, you were not here, Eric, you were not here, and Chuck, you were not here. Do either of, any of the three of you, do you have any further questions? If we've already kind of looked at this, the four of us.
No, I mean, you guys put some, on some new information tonight, which, I mean, as much as I'd love to dig my heels in on this, I, I, you know, the eighteen percent interest is just not palatable for the point we're trying to make, which no one seems to be getting anyway, so.
And I think, as much as it pains me to hand more money that's going to get bled out, we have to be good stewards of our money, and eighteen percent is a lot for our municipality to pay out.
Eric, Chuck, anything?
I just worry the, the biggest risk of all of not paying is they stop showing up to work, and our residents don't have EMS services, and that's a risk I personally will not take, so.
Okay.
Well, to be fair, they would have EMS services, because we've got mutual support agreements.
True, but-
So someone would show up. So let's be fair, that's not, that's not Chicken Little it, the sky isn't falling, we would have coverage. It just wouldn't be with-
Might not be as good, you know?
It just wouldn't be with our EMS team, right?
Could be a longer response time.
Bingo, I will give you that.
Yes.
Longer response time.
Okay, Eric? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Krist.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryanick.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to make our second installment of our second half quarterly payment.
Tammy, do you know what the total is on that?
Thirty-one thousand, three eighty-five.
Sounds about right.
And two cents.
Two cents.
Well, I've got two cents.
Mark's got three.
All righty, let's move on then. New business, library board appointments.
Designing a packet, as you know, we did our appointments a couple of meetings ago. That was- those give us their names just to verify, yes, these are who we want, so the board does have to formally approve each year who the members are.
I'll make a motion to approve the library board appointments as listed in the meeting packet.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries.
Can I just make one comment? So the library board has adopted a lot of new policies, and one of the, and, and we also have rules that relate to the library board. So one of the rules that we have on the library board is how long members can serve on the library board in consecutive, so I believe they serve three-year terms and they can only do two consecutive terms. So that means someone can only serve for six years, so any, the community needs to be aware that there is always going to be rotating opportunities for people to get involved in that library board, and we would really be looking for people in the community to step up and do that. Thank you for that public service announcement.
All right, okay, thank you. Moving on, item B, new business, historic preservation committee appointment. This was probably me.
That was you.
Yeah.
Don't look at me.
And, and it's, oh, we, we. Dean, I'm going to ask you to come up. We have a historic preservation committee, and it hasn't been used in some time, and then when we went to.
That's the name, Historic.
Yeah, we, there was an opening, and so gave this a great deal of thought and realized that we had an individual who had, is very invested in this community. Dean, why do you want to be on the historic preservation committee?
You asked me.
Because you're going out of history?
Born and raised here, I know that, great, you go on to serve, thank you.
Okay, all right.
We ask you for a lot of things, Dean.
Okay, so we, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Dean Lund on the historic preservation committee.
I'll second.
All right.
Thank you.
And.
We haven't voted on it yet.
It's like a fire commission meeting.
All those in favor of having Dean join the committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Doc.
All right. Congratulations, Dean, it was hard fought, I, ooh, wasn't sure about this one. Okay, item C, park reservation, Wyatt Rose, Westside Park, June thirtieth, Lisa, it's, his application is inside of our packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for Wyatt Rose, for Westside Park from June thir, on June thirtieth from ten to one.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I hope it doesn't rain.
Okay, item D, cameras for village properties, recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
This had come from Public Works.
Which is at the time, you, now it's me. Yeah, so we've wanted to authorize Public Works to purchase some cameras for Village Hall here, was that one of them? The Public Works building itself, the, and then over at the compost site, not to exceed, I forget the dollar amount.
Fifteen hundred?
Something like that.
Well, two and three.
I think there were five, that's, Public Works by the garage, right? By the compost site. Well, number two, well, number three, and then the Edmonton Center and the lower level right here. Had to exceed fifteen hundred. Cool.
So is this just informational, you letting us know that, because you guys approved it?
No, it was a recommendation to the board.
Oh, it was a recommendation, okay, sorry, I missed that. Was this budgeted?
It was not, but we are, we have changed up the reservations and we're changing, at the last meeting, it was approved to rekey the building and stuff, so we're saving money for staff time, and this will be divvied up, the fifteen hundred between Public Works, administration, and water and sewer, so.
Oh, sure, sure.
With the new schedule, it's going to pay for itself exponentially, so.
You're not paying for that overtime.
Exactly, exactly.
So I'll make a motion to recommend purchase of the cameras for the village properties.
I'll second. Isn't that to exceed fifteen hundred? I'll second.
Okay, further discussions? Roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Ryanick.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Item E, building inspection services. What can you tell us, Lisa?
As you know, our inspector had resigned, we've been working with Safe Belt, it has not been real smooth, the back and forth, who's getting permits, who's paid, what's, you know, it's, it's been a hassle and a lot of work on the staff. I've been talking with Deerfield, they've been in discussion with Marshall, we're all in the same boat, everyone is going to their boards to see if we're open to going out for RFP, the three communities together to see if we can do something jointly, so we do have inspector, you know, be it with a company or an individual who is dedicated to those communities, who will be spending time in the communities, so staff in all the communities aren't doing a lot of the legwork that the inspector is normally doing, so it's going to be on the agendas in both those communities as well. You know, board decision, do we want to keep trying to work with Safe Belt, hoping they get us an inspector, do we want to go out for RFP by ourselves, or look at options with other communities, or just give me directive to, yeah, look at these different options and bring back what seems to be the best option, so that's kind of where we're at.
Safe, I mean, they used to be the best in the areas, that's a shame they went down the tubes, but.
They have lost a lot of, a lot of staff.
Really?
Yeah.
The problem with hiring one individual is if he's on vacation or he's unavailable, you can't get a hold of anybody, that's why I like having a company like Safe Belt, where they have multiple inspectors, it's, you know, the communication is much, much better, so if, if they're not working out, then I think we should go, I would, I would recommend going for, with another company instead of the individual.
Could the, could the three communities go together and say, we want to use a company, not an individual, but have a mutual contract that says, you know, the RFP would state, we want your company to have a dedicated person to us, knowing that if that person is, but still go in with the three communities because the three may have more power than us as a singular?
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, in talking with Deerfield, what's happened, and this happened before Chris left the company, they were losing people, so he was assigned, you know, four more communities where he didn't have the time to give to those that were his original contracts. So what Deerfield is looking, you know, if it's a company that this one individual is just with these three municipalities, they're not serving five other municipalities, you know, covering when they lose staff, okay, you're picking up these other five communities that are a hundred miles away, and talking to them, you know, obviously Marshall and Deerfield I think would need and require more time than we would, you know, so that would all be figured out, and.
I was going to say, because can we, can we afford?
Not a third of.
Right, can we afford a third time, and do we have the need for a third time building expect, no, but if.
I think we're talking, you know, I think for us, somewhere eight hours a week. Would, especially right now when we have a lot going on, you know, different times of the year, it's going to be different, you know, in the winter, it's more just interior projects, you know, versus, but.
So if we, if we go with the other communities and, and do some sort of RFP, I'd want to be very concerned about.
How it's.
Because quite frankly, being a, being on the other side, I used to work for a consulting company, and if somebody came, came and said, you're, you have to give me one person who's dedicated to only these three and they will never do anything else, that would be really tough for me as, as a consultant to say, I'm going to agree to that, so we want to make sure that we've, how that RFP would be written.
More hours per community and hours in the office, we have not seen anyone in the office here since Chris left.
Wow. I, I, I think we should just direct Lisa to investigate more and, and see what our options are, I think that's the last thing that you had said.
Work with those three, with the other two communities.
Yeah, and consider working with the other three and see what we could put together, what do you guys think?
Start there, can you include other communities?
Village at Deerfield and Marshall.
And is there, is there a fourth, because it seems to me like if we had a fourth one, but what fourth one would there be? There isn't really.
There's other communities that had Chris, some not close to us, some have already gone into agreements.
Got it.
We have looked at other options, some bigger municipalities that are contracting out to, there's one in particular, but they, they may be taking on somebody else who's already in our situation, if not, they'd be willing to have discussions with us, so there's other.
So you've got some things you can investigate and bring us back options.
There's other things we've looked at, but right now it seems, working with the other two, you know, we could always go out for an RFP by ourselves again and do the same where we're at, you know, with a company.
A different company.
Yeah, but.
We'd get a better deal working with Deerfield and Marshall.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a sense of what we're asking you to do here, Lisa?
Yeah, you know, like I said, they both have on their agendas to talk about the three of us working together.
Okay, I don't think there's anything formal that we have to do tonight, then. Okay, moving on, item F, extraterritorial CSM, Stenjum State Highway one thirty-four.
They are just doing a CSM separating the house and shed from the farmland, so it's two separate, two separate parcels. Dane County Planning and Development has given initial conditional approval, but as extraterritorial, we also have to approve it.
Okay, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extraterritorial CSM for Stenjum State Highway one thirty-four.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Carries. All righty, next item up, professional services agreement for GIS twenty-two-two-four MSA.
I can start this, we can have Joe come up because a lot of the next agendas are with Joe in mind. And, so we've been working with MSA, we did get the new GIS system up and running, went through different, met with Todd and Derek, what's important this year, we didn't have specific line items in the budget this year, this is our first full year with the GIS, so we kind of looked what is needed this year, again, it would be broken down with water and sewer, Public Works, admin, a majority of it is with water and sewer, but then looking what's needed next year, so we can start doing individual line items within the budget for the GIS system, so we know, so this kind of breaks down what we looked at for this year, what we're looking at for next year for budgeting purposes, so. In my notes, I have what to break down this, so.
Is this system new to us, or is this system new to us?
GIS is new, last year was the first year we.
And why did we do that?
Hi, hi, guys, I can just talk a little bit about GIS and stuff, obviously this is something that goes at your own pace and your own speed depending on what you want to do, but GIS and asset management has become obviously very critical to a lot of communities, and so trying to keep up with what you have and set up a, a, a web-based server that allows you to find your inventory and do quick analysis of what you have for your own infrastructure and the condition that it's in, is always going to be customized to the community. Last year you made investment to create it, to switch it over to an Esri system that becomes your system, and a lot of this is just updating it for you to get it in a pace, and into a place that's usable, plus the ability for training your staff in order to utilize it, so there's been a transition in staff over time here, so that's been a big part of it, just to make sure that you have this kind of going now and into the future. Why do you use it, why don't you, obviously that's a commitment that you have to make that determines on how you want to keep track of your assets and things like that, but one of the things was notice is that with transitions that occur at different levels, having this information available that's easy to pick up by others is something that makes it much beneficial for the community going forward. And so obviously we gave a smorgasbord of ideas of what you could include, I don't know exactly what was selected, it'd be around eleven thousand dollars, but a lot of times communities are just budgeting some money and trying to tackle some of the things to get more apps, which is what it's called, have more layers and stuff that's established, if it's your sewer or your water, your boating morgues, it could be anything, sign inventory.
New zoning maps.
New zoning maps, all of it eventually becomes under your control, that eventually you can have it up on a map and just share it and use it rather than calling up MSA or printing off diagrams, it becomes a system that for you to be able to use more than it is for us. And so long-term, it has a bigger investment, it takes effort to put in, it's only as good as what you put in for information, but that zoning map, for example, is that once you get to it, if you have a parcel that switches zoning, you don't have to wait to reprint the map, you can update it, it's on your website and it's available to the public almost right after it gets approved, in your own speed, and that's just one example. If you replace a road and you got new infrastructure and you got new locations on it, you can update it yourself eventually is where we hope to get you, but when you're starting kind of from scratch, it takes.
That is using this system as he's walked the village for sidewalks.
Yeah, inspection.
To put in sidewalks need repairs and so forth, so later this year we'll be going into that sidewalk, but.
We, we see this so commonly used now that it's like even exercising your valves, like if you do it every year, you can keep track of it, where you can update it, put the date, put notes on it, manholes, leaks, things like that, you just, it's another tool of keeping track of things so that it's just not all in someone's memory, you know, so that's one of the bigger things that I've seen, it's just, it doesn't go away, guys, it's obviously an investment in your data collection and a way to inventory what you've done. So I'm happy to answer more questions, but this is really up to you and your investment if this.
Is this the only cost we have for this?
Well, there, it's gotten better, but there's an ongoing cost that you host license, so when you have license for Word and stuff, you pay, you now own your own license and you own the data, this is your stuff, so it doesn't go away, but you've paid for it last year as well, this would be the only cost from an MSA and an investment, to the standpoint for, for a hard number cost for you this year, except for licenses are usually like five hundred bucks, so you might be having that this year as well, but it's, you know, you paying for the license fee, but then it's investment of your time, I mean, your staff puts effort into it, they're using it, they're getting trained, so there's some investment in your staffing as well to use this, but it's, it sure beats writing it down by paper or not writing it down at all, so I, I don't think that's worth it, but there's some time there.
It's going to save time for staff in the long run.
Yeah.
Hundred percent you'll see it would have benefited you at times.
Didn't, didn't we, because I remember talking about when we put this in and there was a small line item last year, or last year, and then we knew each year there was going to be until we got like the database all filled out and stuff.
Yeah.
What did we budget for this year, did we?
I, it's not individual line items.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
No, so it's, I did do the breakdown for what is in this contract for this year, seven thousand is water, one thousand is sewer, and three thousand is the village, so that would come out of the general. the general miscellaneous, you know, administration for the zoning app. Not this year, next year, the roads. So when Todd has to do the Whistler, the road rating system, it's all in there and it's, you know. So.
Tammy, was there any part of this that could I noticed on some municipality websites that they utilize this information on their websites. Is there any possibility for that?
I'm sure we could.
Yeah.
You'll get there. But there's some layers you will not provide to the public and there's some that you will.
Okay.
Your water system, your valves are things that usually are password protected, your boating areas, your zoning, recreational. There's so many things that are out there, tree inventory, anything you want, all of that are available apps that you can have it there. It's just which ones you make available to the public and which ones you keep internal is at your control. That's why, like I said, it's very individualized.
I think we already know this, but Todd, you've had experience and you fully support this?
Oh, yeah. This is an awesome tool.
Okay.
You can't you can't you can't not have this. This is a definite tool. And it's going to do nothing but help the village and the people. It's going to help the next next public work guys because they don't have to look through files at these drawings, these hand drawings of this is how they this is how they did the water main and stuff like that. That's right here. It's right. It's already in the phone.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
A motion to approve the scope of services as from MSA as in including attachment A in our packet in the amount of 11,000.
100.
11,100.
11,100.
I'll say again.
Okay. Any questions?
A certain percentage of that's coming out of water and sewer?
Yep. And like I said, we met Todd, Derek, and I to kind of go over to see what was highest priority this year, what could be put up for future years.
Okay, roll call, please.
Sorry, just one other question before we. I'm putting my tinfoil hat on now. So what kind of protect because, you know, all of this is going into a database and this is all about our water supply and all. So what kind of protections are there to make sure that nefarious parties wouldn't get their hands on this information?
You have an excellent question and it's way above my pay grade when it comes to safety. But I do know that I can't get into it.
Okay.
I struggle every time, but that but that doesn't mean much. So I know that it's under your control. The biggest thing I usually get asked of is this is data. It's your data. And there's other firms that don't. I mean, they keep it. They put it, this is yours. So when it's available to you, it's on your website, your cloud. We, and like I said, a store, but it is password protected to the passwords and stuff that are provided to you and the staff that you want.
Do you do you do you know if they use multi-factor authentication to get into the system? Any of you who've been in it?
I would assume they would have to.
I don't I don't have access right now.
Do you know?
Just the public works does.
Do you know, Todd, do they have MFA, multi-factor authentication, meaning you have to do a password plus you have to like call in or answer a code like?
A code on your phone?
It's just it's just a password.
No, it's just one right now.
Okay. Can we would you mind just asking if we can put multi-factor authentication into their into this? Because I'm assuming it's hosted in the cloud somewhere. So in that cloud hosting, can we see if they can provide multi-factor authentication?
I think it's probably doable, but let's ask the smarter people.
Cool. Thank you. That's like what we do when we have to log into our email, the board members.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Brian Ogg.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Todd.
Amir.
Okay. We'll get back with you here. Moving on, acceptance of infrastructure for Westgate development.
Back to me. A lot of these items kind of tie together. Some of them are just updates. Some of them are things we get a boat on. So just to make sure, acceptance of the infrastructure at Westgate, this has been ongoing for a while. The project was finished last year. At some point, we make a recommendation to you to accept the public improvements. If you're not familiar with the site, some of the improvements are not complete. We've acknowledged them in the letter that's been included. It is our recommendation to accept the public improvements based on when it was completed last fall. We definitely had some fun trying to collect some of the last data. But again, it was installed. We were out there. We do feel the inspection has been complete where we feel that it's been installed correctly. But we do think it's contingent on some of the things that are not complete. Sidewalk in particular is a big one of them. There's a punch list of things that have to be done. Again, not out of ordinary to have punchless items after the work. They have a one-year warranty on this. But I think more or less is that we finally feel comfortable with the record drawings that have been provided to us and the information that we obtained that we would recommend approval of the public improvements to start the one-year warranty contingent on the items listed that have not been addressed and anything else that comes up during the one-year warranty period. The other thing that typically comes up that I'm going to bring up that ties to the other things is that we are not asking for a reduction in a letter of credit that has not been requested at this time. Our letter of credit obviously covers the ability, but since there is some improvements that have been complete, let's just say the sewer, the water main that's been installed, we could reduce the credit at the re-request, but we would not reduce it to the point where it covers anything that could be incurred from this point forward. Sidewalk is something we're going to talk about here down the, you know, the sidewalk that's incomplete. We don't reduce the letter credit for things that are not installed and we don't accept improvements for what's not installed. So I just want to clarify those. But my recommendation to you for this item would be to accept the public improvements contingent on the lists that's been provided and incomplete work would be my motion to that I throw it to you. Jane, I covered it so far. All right, thanks.
All right. Anybody care to make a motion of that nature?
How large is the punch list?
Yeah, it's in your packet. It's not too large at all, actually. So.
Two general notes and six exterior notes.
Yep.
That's the one that has the general and exterior in it?
Next letter from November?
November 27, 2023. And record drawings have been provided now, but there's still like the bird bass, the sidewalk is still not completed. The wet detention pond had a concrete lid, stuff like that. And we will do another walkthrough as we speak. You still have the one-year warranty. But the biggest thing is that the sidewalk wasn't complete. That's one of the biggest ticket items that would still cost money. And plus, it's the next gen item, too. Well, the road.
The road is not complete there.
The cul-de-sac.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac has has.
It's just gravel.
Gravel. Okay. I I got to look at it and see, but I do think that.
That's not that's point six on this, that the asphalt in cul-de-sac to be completed in 2024. Yeah.
Again, you have the letter of credit and I didn't read number six, but yes, you got it, guys. It's covered. It's one of the other items. The sidewalk's the one I'm more concerned about. But yes, that one has to get paved in order to be completed. There is obviously discussions, as you're aware of, that some businesses propose a lot out there that could be coming in. And obviously, that cul-de-sac was put in as temporary asphalt because we knew it'd be torn out anyway. And so there may be some requests coming back to you at some point. I'm not sure of their schedule. But at the end, you still have the warranty that allows you to do it yourself. So it goes right along with the sidewalk. So they have to show us the cost estimate in order to reduce the letter of credit. But right now, we're holding on to about one point, almost just one to 1.1 million dollars, somewhere right in there. And there's by far not that much work left.
So Jane, what's your thoughts on us accepting this?
Oh, I agree. Yeah, Joe and I talked through it. We just wanted to make it very clear that there's plenty of money for the sidewalk, even even though it it's in wetlands. So there may be mitigation, which that's that's where the cost of the sidewalk can really come. But we've talked about even under the most mitigation scenario, there's plenty of money left for it.
That would include a temporary cul-de-sac, too, would be covered under that million dollars.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to get this started?
I'll make a motion to accept the infrastructure or accept the infrastructure for Westgate development.
Contingent on the list provided.
Contingent on the list that is provided to MSA. I'll say again.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, next up is sidewalk to Westgate Court.
I kind of already told you a little bit about it. I think the biggest thing I wanted to make sure you're aware of is that we acknowledged and have talked to the developer in past and in present that the sidewalk that we've required as part of this development from the old QuickTrip, which it really goes to the subway parking lot all the way through to the new one, is something that we've also had included as part of this proposal. We knew that this is not the time to install it. I mean, obviously, because we thought that the closure of the old QuickTrip would be better at the time. So timing of this is something that we would anticipate for next year. There is sidewalk along West Court that is not completed as well. Westgate Court still has some. That's something that can be completed that they will probably provide this year. But we are talking about the sidewalk that kind of continues parallel to the highway that will have to be installed. We've had some internal discussions about that. We have also talked to QuickTrip about the timing of it. And they're on board, obviously, working with us with temporary easements and good communication on when we think it could do because they're going to be tearing out the tanks and obviously doing some of the environmental, the old one. And why put something in and just have them drive over it? Makes a lot of sense. Part of the communication we have is that the responsibility of getting this done is on the applicant. The letter of credit that was referred to before is to cover that improvements. We have documentation and emails, obviously, of that. And so that we do think that now going into this year and getting ready for next year, construction would be what we think is the anticipated schedule for those improvements. So we will be talking to the developer and communicating with them. But there could be some requests or ability for that to be kind of completed by the community. And so I think we'll be coming back to you at some point to have discussions on how to get that complete. And yet, it would be coming out of the cost of the either the letter of credit or paid for directly by the developer as agreed in your developer's agreement, getting communication through the DOT, dealing with the wetland mitigation that could be required and getting that design to a point where it meets it probably is going to take more effort than what was currently done when we got this first original. We really don't have anything of solid showing us what the elevations are or where it is. We just have a kind of meandering path that shows, hey, it's going to connect. But we don't have anything that I think is really going to be acceptable yet from the DOT. One of the other elements I want to make you prepared for is that something outside of the developer's control, something that's not really his requirement, is making a full connection to the bike path that's located on the opposite side of the highway, which goes out right out to the vineyards and that beautiful, you know, bike path that goes in, that we do know that the DOT has a planned crosswalk across the signalized intersection so it can create the whole loop. But that is something that would be obviously more of your responsibility to make that final connection and maybe some paint marks of going across one the highway. And so I say that not because I have a direct answer for you, but more to provide you an update is as we communicate with the developer and make sure we have an understanding that it's their responsibility, I do think this is a perfect time for you to deal with it and make that final connection across because I don't think it's going to be that much of a burden to make that bike path or sidewalk connect to it so that you have a complete loop coming from, let's say, the subway parking lot, past the old QuickTrip, across the wetlands to that intersection, and then having a safe, controlled crossing at the signals that are just installed to allow people to cross in order to get onto the bike path that you know connects a lot more. And so I want to make sure you're aware of it. I don't want to have any surprises. So I thought, hey, I'm going to be here. Let's have this communication. But I do see at some point the developer maybe requesting that he pays for his portion while you guys work with it in order to get it done and built with, you know, the extension that comes out to the new intersection, that it might be the time for you to talk about putting in another 50 to 75 feet of bike path as well or sidewalk.
The issue I have, Joe, is that I don't want there to be a situation where I understand everything that you stated about waiting on the sidewalk and everything. But I don't want there to be a situation moving down the road where all of a sudden the developer's like, what are you talking about? What sidewalk? Or, you know, our line of credit is depleted to a point where, you know, going through all the mitigation and everything else is not functional. Sidewalk is important.
Yeah.
To myself and I imagine other board members. So that's why I was a little reticent about putting the acceptance of infrastructure because it is so important for us. So I don't know if there's any way that you can you could state that to the the folks that are working on this project, but we need we need that sidewalk.
I I guys, this has been a big pet peeve of mine for many times. We've had discussions and trying to get QuickTrip going. But the one thing I do agree is that I think the timing is better long term to wait until there's a destination to get it built. But I want to be ready to put that in as soon as we have it because just imagine if they get done here, I don't know what the completion date is anticipated, but sometime in the spring, there could be a period of time where people are trying to walk to the QuickTrip and utilizing the road shoulders and stuff. The DOT is going to be supportive of it, but we have DNR issues, DOT issues. And then obviously, what I've talked about is the crossing you as a municipality. So this is a lot about communication to make sure you're not surprised. But we are working with a developer right now that's on the hook for a major part of this. And we owe it to him to start that communication, to come back to you, obviously, with an approach on what we anticipate happening. But us being here today while the building's going up, we can tell them we're trying to be as proactive as we can. And that's why when we talked to Lisa and had this, it was all about trying to communicate with you because you're right, it is important.
So, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say to that point, Joe's recommendation to you all is just that these improvements be accepted contingent on those remaining items. So so that is baked into Joe's proposal.
And we do have documentation. Part of the letter of credit does include in their commitment that they have put money aside for this sidewalk. The biggest item of discussion with the developer is, is he doing it or is the village doing it at his expense? But MSA doing the engineering and the legwork to get it done, not his develop his engineers?
It's just for for us, when it comes to developers, I want us to be able to walk on the rocks that pass boards have stumbled on, you know? I want us to learn from our mistakes.
Yep.
And we have had quite a few mistakes when it comes to developers. So I just want us to be proactive, as proactive as possible, as supportive as possible for yourself, Joe, and MSA.
So who's going to determine where? Because because QuickTrip owns the current land that needs sidewalk and the land to the new area where they're going to be, right? Or the developer? Because QuickTrip owns current QuickTrip.
Yeah, okay.
There's no sidewalk there.
Yep.
So who's going to determine what path that sidewalk takes through the current QuickTrip? It's it's my neighborhood. So I walk this all the time. And and we're not planning to put the sidewalk on the very outside where people coming around that curve are going to hit people walking on sidewalk.
Well, I'm going to answer a couple of questions, but we don't want anybody to get hit. So I'll tell you that right now. So that's going to be a goal for everything. So I don't care who designs it. We're going to call. We're going to knock that one right off the pick. But you got to understand, when you're approving this, I'm doing it within the DOT right away everywhere. And so I got to have their approval. So having safety, like what is the distance between the edge of the road and the sidewalk? What's the elevation? What's the drainage? That's all kind of control that we have to make a submittal to them for their approval to allow us to put it within their right away, which deals with if there's underground, if there's any other easements. We have to work with them to find that right spot. They want it to be safe, too. They want the sidewalk because they don't want people walking alongside of it. But I have to make them satisfied. And I'm just using me as an example, that the final decision on where it goes, just like the Highway 34 in Lagoon, has a lot to do with the DOT approval than anything else. Now, the other side of part that causes me issue is what we refer to as wetland. And so finding a balance of safety away from people and the traveling versus the walking and then safety and not trying to impact much of the environment, like how close can we get to the wetland? Do we have to take out some wetlands in order to make sure we can provide that safe distance? That's the DNR. And so when you start tying these two together along with what your goals are, it comes hand in hand. So when it comes across their existing site, there's also the whoever owns the subway parking lot.
Right, there's that bit. That was going to be my next question.
Lot. And then we got lot two that's currently owned by someone else that we have to work with. And then we have actually public road that was installed. And so QuickTrip itself from a new lot has really no impact. And the old lot, they've already given us an easement that we know that QuickTrip is not going to be an issue because they want this just as much as you do. They see the same thing.
So in the current lot, when they because eventually they're going to sell that.
Yeah.
But are we are we hoping the sidewalks in before they sell?
Regardless, you're still protected.
We are.
But yes, I'm hoping as soon as they do the demolition and get rid of their tanks, that we're prepared. Now, when is the timing? Those are things we have to communicate with them. But I think they were when we had the early discussions with them, they were very clear that the last thing they want to see is you put a new sidewalk in and then they tear that heck out of it by all of a sudden having to rip out the tanks and and demo their site. And I don't mean the building. don't mean the building, they have to, you know, obviously deal with where the underground and the service station is. So we will continue to communicate with you and them once we get more direction, but right now the key is, is that we're not letting them off the hook, that it's still part of the requirements, and we want to make sure we communicated that with you, because it is going to be delayed from a standpoint, you're going to see the building done, and we hope to be ready to put it in, and I'm expecting it next year, but we don't have everything worked out and scheduled-wise at this moment.
So most likely the sidewalk won't go in until next year?
No, no.
Not going this year?
Not a chance, next year.
Next year?
Yeah, sorry, I said that wrong, but there's no way in heck I could get it done this year.
Just want to make sure.
I just wanted to get across the street.
Yeah.
Go with an T.
Well, then that goes to the other point that I'm kind of putting, I noticed is that if we do do this, this is the time for you to get your small portion of it done, too, because having that complete loop to get across, I think, would be beneficial for everyone, and I don't, we planned for it, we have it, but there's no obligation for the developer to complete that.
Yeah.
So do we want to start working on plans for the crosswalk, so we're ready?
That part is so simple, and I almost got, we almost had it done when we did it, that we got it planned out, it's just a matter of going through that, that little triangle in the Highway 134 kind of area that we just have to make sure it meanders in, it won't be a hard part of it. Getting the DNR and DOT approval, that's why doing it all at the same time makes the most sense, but I'm not worried about that as much as I am about mitigation and the design of that, and so hopefully we get some more direction from the developer in our conversation, and then we'll be back in touch with you of how we're recommending proceeding forward. So like I said, a lot of this is update, not much action for you on that one, but as you can see, you guys do have some opinions on this, and that's why we thought it'd be important to express them tonight and just make sure you're where we're at.
So you don't need anything specific from us tonight?
This is more informational, and your opinions and guide tells me that we're on the right page, so I think it was important just to make sure we're all communicating, and you guys pretty much confirm what we were suspicion of what you thought already.
Okay. All right, Jane, because you had, okay. All righty, thank you, moving on. Update on Lagoon Drive, State Highway 134.
Told you.
Anyways, we're tonight.
And I have to think, Joe, he came from a meeting in a different community, and that's why all of this stuff was put at the end of our agenda, so that.
And some of it is tied together, too, so I do appreciate guys working into my schedule, but I do think like these next three all kind of tie together with the infrastructure and the connectivity that's being provided for traffic within the Vineyard subdivision and stuff, so when you look at it, we thought of one, provide an update, have any discussion, and then obviously proceeds one into the other, so if I cross over, don't worry about it, but I guess I want to make sure that you had the opportunity to know that there's some things that we want to discuss. Regarding the Highway 134 and Lagoon Drive update, I brought to you the new set of plans that have been submitted to the DOT, so you can see they're getting thicker, you have all the chance you want to look at it, but we now have a complete set of plans that's being reviewed right now by the DOT for the safe realignment of Lagoon, obviously, into, I don't even know what the name of the other road is, what is it called? Vineyard Drive. Vineyard Drive, for the history, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of it, I don't know how many new board members we have, but it was built at the time of the subdivision, and when they were going to bring it out to connect to 134, there was a site distance issue, so they could not connect it, and they stopped it basically at the right-of-way of the DOT, right where it is currently. At the moment, they said that the realigning Lagoon Road in order to connect into it, in order to go with Vineyard Drive is what they're proposing, propose to make it a four-way intersection, and then abandoning the existing location of Lagoon Road, so there'd be a safety in that. With the selling of the property to the Dancing Goat, which is where the Rick Houses are currently started, and obviously the plans are to proceed there, we preserve the ability to realign Lagoon to tie up into that at that point when it came to make sense. MSA was authorized to go ahead and proceed with the design, put some preliminary plans together, we looked at the alignment, obviously, we got some initial review from the DOT saying that our Q, or what you call your tapered lanes, you know how you got to slow down and speed up, and what they had to be, to kind of like the two-dimensional aspect of it was approved by them, and then we went ahead and prepared three-dimensional that shows the elevation, shows what our site distance is, and kind of gives you a feel for how long the improvements are. Nothing's really different than what I showed you before, except we got a lot more detail in here, but the one thing that when I talked to Lisa about it, that I think our next steps are, one, hopefully hear back from the DOT within a reasonable time, which has already been two months, but again, it takes them a while to get back to us, so I'm just not that worried or pushing that hard at it, but two, to look at where your TIF sits at after you've already had a couple of years that you're hoping to utilize in order to pay for this intersection, and see how that sits for, what is it, TIF number four? Three?
I believe it's four.
Four, we'll call it four today. So TIF number four that was out there is obviously, hopefully, is going to help you pay for that to see where that is, and then do a cost estimate to kind of get a feel for what the cost is. I am, when you look at the schedule and when to do it, obviously, it was intended when we set this up, is to complete this, once we had the packaging plant that was being proposed at the Rick House as the trigger to do it, obviously, there could be other things that could trigger when those improvements are going to be in, but there is nothing forcing you or requiring you to do that, except that if you have an agreement or your own self on wanting to get this completed, on when it has to be done. The only thing that you authorize me do is to finish the design, submit it into the DOT, and go from there. Again, talking about the sidewalk job, there's no way I'd recommend doing it this year, I'll tell you that right now, that this is too big of a project, and the way biddings are, it's already May, there is no possible way that I would recommend to you without paying a premium price of a contractor to get it completed, so unless there's some push here, I at least wanted to bring that up. The earliest I'd recommend it to go for it, if you are considering it, is 2025. Why would you consider it, that'd be more, when we talk about some of the other items, is having access to 12 and 18, or access to 134, creating other routes to get out of the subdivision that's kind of located in that portion of your community, could be things to consider. Obviously, there is discussions about more, I would say, development of possibly the land over there in that direction from the Rick Houses, there could be another building being constructed, but again, it's not something that has to be completed at this time unless you guys feel it's necessary to tell me to do it. So with that being said, I will still find out where you're sitting from a cost estimate, because it's never been a, I'm sorry, not a high priority, because I didn't think we're going to be that close, and then to just do a check on your TIF and see, okay, how's that looking, and compare to being able to pay for a project like this, knowing that you got the well project that's also hoping for some money out of that, and some other things that could be a possible cost that I wanted to make sure we at least get that back to Lisa, so that you can have that in future meetings. So any questions about that, before I move on to the next one, that's more of an update and where it's at? If you guys say, hey, Joe, start hitting hard at the DOT and pushing for it, I will, but right now it's kind of like, you know, they'll get back to me when they can, and I can easily have it ready for next year.
I know when we first heard about the Lagoon Road in the meetup, in my head, I was always thinking the earliest we would do that is 2025? Are we thinking it might be more of a 2026 now? I don't know what the rest of the board is feeling.
I'll add, I think, I, part of this discussion started as we're getting more growth within the Vineyard subdivision, the Kentseth lots and so forth, more interest in, so do we need to start looking at more access to that subdivision? So that's part of how our discussion, you know, to bring this before you know, so in the back of our minds, if we have more apartments going in, I've had a developer express interest in some of the lots for smaller, like eight-unit buildings, somebody else has come forward looking at one of the lots in the Kentseth subdivision, now that all the homes are complete, more condominiums will be going in, so as we're getting more density in that area, do we want to start looking at it sooner rather than later as another?
Yeah, but, so my, my thing is where the density is going into Kentseth, into the, into, on the Kentseth side, I don't know how an egress and ingress on 134 is necessarily going to help that side of it, so I think the next point that's on our agenda may be more relevant to that stuff.
And, and counter to that, would the residents be using that rather than coming out Kentseth onto 1218?
Sure, for the ones that are on that side, the ones that are on that side now, got it.
Diverting the traffic out that way, rather than all out the front end.
I know, I know, I always take the 134 now, because I like the stoplight.
Mark, you got a question in the audience?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to mention, to talk to the light commission, our intention is to break ground on additional building on that property that we're talking about, our understanding when that building goes in, it will require an additional service road for first responders that will push some action from the DOT, so I just want full transparency, we are going to submit that, and this with the state right now, assuming we cannot, we won't break ground this year, and our priority is making sure first responders have access to that property, which would force some of this work on 134. The other thing I just wanted to mention, just back to the initial CSM that was authored by the developer, signed off by the village in 2015, this access road has been on there as a planned access point since 2015, so.
Yeah, everybody knows, everybody knows, everybody knows we're going to need to do it, it's just a matter of when, and, and I think we, and like I said, I thought it was going to be, originally, my idea was 2025, but I don't, so it sounds like that might still be the case.
This will bleed into one of the other agenda items of the homeowners that live in this community that we've now been backed into a corner where our business is forced to go through a subdivision that doesn't fit semi-trailers, so, you know, we built our business around a CSM that was approved, and we're nine years later, and so that's some hard push on it.
Again, guys, to be fair to you, obviously, you are paying for it, that's what the plan is, and so for you to find out exactly what the cost is and look in your TIF is something you should be waiting for when you're going into your budget season for 2025, so that's why, like Lisa directed us, I think it's very important for you, obviously, they're absolutely correct, it was considered, there's obviously triggers on when it was, but having the ability to do it when it's being required, those are things that obviously come as part of the agreements and the developer's agreement that you're going to have when that next phase comes in. Those obviously help you pay for it, so that's all great news, and we want to accommodate and do it, but right now, it's, it's in at the DOT, and I'm waiting for the approvals, and then you'll be able to trigger and go ahead, but no, even if they started now and not having it in place, and just using that as a reference, I still would wait till at least 2025, so that'd be when I would want you to make that decision and let me know what you think, but at least wait to find out what the cost is and what your TIF sits at, so you know if it's affordable.
Okay. All right, you want to continue on here then, Joe?
So what you alluded to over there, and again, I want to make sure I got this correct, there has been some discussion with other developments about having another connection created, obviously, to 12 and 18, a little bit north of your current Kentseth Way intersection over by the Vineyard. So Rodney Road is a intersection that currently is out there, that's like a town that's built on the, I'm just calling it the south side, so obviously, there's been some discussion with the DOT about a potential secondary or second access off the 12 and 18 located at that location. We have coordinated with the DOT, we have contacted them to ask them for some consideration, they have now set up a meeting for us on June 20th at probably 1:00, as we understand, to meet with their group, where they're going to put together with us a criteria of things that they want to see. It would lead to a lot more discussion about traffic impact analysis and spacing and things in that nature that I would expect out of it, but the initial, call it pre-council's kickoff-type meeting, to hear exactly what most of their departments will think about will occur on that date. So I don't have much direction for you, except that we have been contacted about the possibility of a new intersection there, we are looking into it, and that once we hear from them, there will still be a lot of follow-up coordination for an intersection like that, but because we're going here, and this all ties hand-in-hand with these items, we wanted to let you know where that one's currently at as well. Sorry, I can't tell you much more, it's not a fast process, but it is something that has started.
Rodney Road isn't Christiana, but the parcel that the village just gave over to the Vineyard, when they did the CSM for that, there is a easement in there for a possible road, so.
Yeah.
That's always been one of the plans, but it ultimately is DOT's decision if we have the access.
They own the access rights to it, that's the one coordination we have from them, there's no way, obviously, you can have access without their approval, sometimes when you get closer to town, you can decide this is under their control because they purchased the access rights for it, so we got to prove the hardship.
We have a question back there.
Yeah, I have a question about Blake Sullivan, Vineyard HOA, is this DOT discussion about 1218 access point, is that an either-or proposition with this 134?
No, no. It's an and. Because we are, we're definitely doing the 134 one.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, and the 1218 one is dependent on approval from the DOT, really, that's one of the deciding factors.
Or I guess what triggered that need, was it, is it these additional apartments that are going in, or I guess, what made the DOT decide this needs to be?
Okay, now, I want to make sure I got this squared, so I want to make sure we got the, let's just call it the Rodney Road, the one or the one by 134?
Rodney Road.
Well, okay, so just to clarify, none of these are necessarily approved by the DOT yet, and so we go through this process, so when you took that Vineyard Drive and Lagoon, we first did a traffic analysis, we talked to them, they already told us they wouldn't get it in until we lined it, so this has been going on, oh my gosh, you probably had this one since 2070.
It was the first time I was on the board.
So, so that whole Vineyard ride being stubbed out is something that's been worked on over a lot of time, that we're getting so close that they're probably going to approve it, but I don't have their approval yet, it's just that we've gotten this far that I'm, I'm pretty confident they're going to do it.
With the growth in the subdivision, the additional apartments, the other interest in lots, like we said, the new CSM did have the easement for a future road, so that's kind of all the impetus for going back to them DOT now, with all this development, is now the time to be able to get approval.
So when it comes down to the access at Rodney Road, we're, we're so far away from having any type of DOT support to have any feeling for it, that to say it's going to happen, or timing, or how we got there is so far, because they might say, hey, we would have to be able to lower speeds, hey, we have to have you X amount of feet from the other intersection, there's so many what-ifs yet that they could require of us that it might not even be feasible, that we're so, we're just starting like, hey, let's just see if there's any interest there, and what they would require, that it's not, it's not going to happen.
Totally fine with that, I didn't concern about timing, really, just a question of what even kicked off, like the inquiry, was it the density from the new?
Well, obviously, that the proposal of the apartments, like you just alluded to, and the fact that there was an easement for it, and some of the concerns about having a secondary access for long-term planning, all led to let's at least look into it and some due diligence, so I don't know if there's anything that's forcing us to do it, except let's explore to see and court, to be honest, it's like, if we have an easement there and they're not going to allow it, would we do something different? And would we have to have a different location that has to be considered? So it's, obviously, I think that's what's triggering, because it's a good time before we let it develop, but that's what's coming from.
Yeah, I think from a HOA perspective, all that density, it's either speculative or in process, you know, that you guys are looking for, anything that puts more into point that west away from the, you know, the single-family homes, where there could be a lot of trash or all sorts of stuff.
Okay. All right, Joe, now, there's one more item here then, the median on Kentseth Way. You talking about that one, too?
Yeah, eventually.
We did move public comments here, this was a request from, specifically, it started from the owner of the apartment buildings, that there has been some cutting of that corner onto. So I don't know if we want to take some public comment first, or Joe, if you want to talk first, or, you know.
Okay, I'll put a sheet in there for you to look at, obviously, we've been contacted about this information, so if you see sheet 42, you can see what we call is the turn movements of that intersection. We want a public comment, because obviously, if there's any chance that you would allow people to want to come up here and discuss what they're seeing and doing it, I guess, Mark, if you want, then I'd obviously appreciate if they come up here and say what they're seeing, and then we can have our discussion once we have public comment first. So I can finally step away for a little bit and come back later if you'd like.
Okay, all right. Who would like to go first here? Blake, it's yours, just please introduce yourself again, though.
Blake Sullivan, President of the Vineyard HOA, really, you know, Dancing Goat's been good neighbors to us, and we want to be good neighbors to them, we know it's going to be some time, 2025 at least, with that 134 access, so anything that can help them get their semi's out in a way that appeases Dave Decker, you know, with his apartments and all the greenery that's going there, you know, the HOA, we do have responsibilities to maintain some of the, like the shrubbery, the aesthetics, the, you know, the, I don't know, I'm not a botanist, what's the word I'm thinking of?
Spireia?
Yeah, yeah, the planting and stuff, and gardening and all that, and there, you know, we just made an investment in that to have that redone, and so if there is any cutbacks, just anything. So if there is any cutbacks, just anything, just kinda stay coordinated with us, because we wanna make sure we're keeping that, you know, maintained. But, I mean, otherwise, we're deferential to the needs of Dave and Dancing Goat. And again, just wanna reiterate, they've been a great neighbor to us, I wanna put that on record. Appreciate him being part of the community.
All right.
Yes, so this thing's been going on for a long while, Polly had mentioned, everybody knows about the CSM, I don't know if any, but everyone in the community does. And so I just wanna reiterate, you know, we, we built our business around a CSM. We had no intentions of trying to turn a 53-foot trailer with a median, and as the, I'm gonna say drawing show, it's not even possible. So those drivers do a heck of a job, but they have to swing way, way, way left, and they still get up on the curb. But this is our, our single entry point and a lifeblood of our business, and it's also a throughput to the, the community where there's kids and everything else. So again, we built our business around an approved CSM with, with additional access points, and we're kinda left with this one. I was approached by the, the HOA and the, and the, the community members there around what, what will we do about it? And frankly, I didn't have a good answer, I don't know who has authority over that, that was not a decision that we made for that to be our, our single entry point. So we're happy to, to come to the table, but I did not have a good answer for them, and so that's why I wanted to be here tonight.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? That is here this evening. Okay, all right, now we're back to you, Joe. The long and the short of it is, we've got what, trucks that are running up on curbs?
Again, I just have a chance to listen to the public here and provide it, if you do look at sheet number 42 out of 43 in your packet, that is an auto turn that shows the different types of semis and stuff that was kinda being alluded to. And so when you start up there, you can see in the upper right-hand corner, those are the four different trucks that we kinda simulated in order to give you a feel for what happens. Obviously, starting off with the SU 30, it's only a double-wheel axle, and then you get into the semis with the different beds and length. So obviously, the biggest one at the end is the WB 62, or 65, and it shows the length of the trailer. So again, it's just auto turn, we show it, and in order to try and miss the curve as much as possible, they almost have to pull over to the opposite lane to make the turn in order to miss the median, and then pull in, and the back wheels would jump over top of the curb and gutter in that corner. I only bring that up because again, it's something that obviously with the turns and what it is, because the median's in place there, not driving over that or trying to drive over one, there is an impact, and it just is what it is. At the time, obviously, thinking back, that obviously this intersection was designed, maybe it wasn't meant for that size of equipment, maybe it wasn't meant that things have changed over time, the type of uses I know has been, discussion has come back, but you're obviously looking at the situation and what it is today. So when do you build stuff and how do you make the improvements when it comes down to ownership of what was referred to? Obviously, this is your right of way, this is yours. So the decision on how to make the improvements really comes to you. There could be a request from the outside to come and make some improvements, that's a possibility. But again, when it comes down to maintaining it, the public and the infrastructure, the curbing gutter, storm sewer, things like that, that all belongs to your, you and the Public Works Committee. There's nothing obviously that says it has to be this way either, despite what it says, hey, safety and things like that, it's not obviously hitting any sidewalks, it's not having any impact on, on those situations. It is going over top of the curb and gutter, probably staining and stuff, but the curb and gutter and stuff, if it breaks or cracks, obviously falls under maintenance and things that you'd be taking care of. So when is the right time, if you do wanna do something, is really up to your direction and discussion. Now, the discussion about Lagoon Road and having alignment and stuff, obviously, this has been like that for a long time. The CSM that's approved to provide that secondary access is just a matter of time, and I know it was discussed, because the number of trips that go out there based on how often they're out there with that rick house was something in the order of maybe three vehicles a day, something like that, which could increase or decrease, but the whole idea is the, was letting it sit out there, which is phenomenal. Setting up another one to construction, things like that, at some point, having that access is something we're gonna recommend, and it's coming, as you already alluded to. So what is the right timing of it, even if you put that access in, doesn't mean that we're never gonna have a semi trying to make that turn to go into it, isn't fair to say either. The shortest way to get to Madison at some point is to come down through Kenseth and actually take two returns and head out of town. You can't change that. And so when you look at doing these improvements, and when to focus on it, that's really your discussion. Now, I only bring that up because right now, to go out there and take care of a little bit of concrete to pull it up in order to stop what's going on currently, it's a lot of effort for what results. The concrete's being driven on, I don't know exactly what the impact is being, but that's really at the discussion you would have to provide back to me and what you'd wanna do, or to your public works staff in order to shorten it, but the best thing would be in order to eliminate that, would be to shorten up the median. Now, the median provides two different things, and I don't see much for sidewalk at that, so I'm just gonna ask you, that I only see sidewalk up in one corner, or am I missing, this isn't the most uptight area photo?
There's only sidewalk by the park.
So if I'm looking at it right now, and I see the upper right-hand corner, there's a sidewalk that comes out, and it's no other direction. And so sometimes they put medians in there to provide a refuge for pedestrians, that doesn't seem to be the issue here. So this has been more for purposes of.
The median was part of the original discussion with the developers when the subdivision went in, and they wanted the medians and the entry, you know, vineyards.
Visibility type thing.
It was all part of that.
And so obviously, so as mentioned by the Homeowners Association, that responsibly, maybe maintaining or planting, it could be something that's there, shorten it up and working on it, or make it an amountable median are things that can be considered. Obviously, the road is still in good shape, it's not something you're gonna do any reconstruction at any time, so this would be going back there to make some kind of a combinations that you'd have to decide if it's something worth your investment. Putting in Lagoon Road is coming next year, so obviously having somebody go over the top until that's built, if that takes care of it, could be an option as well. But I'm here obviously to answer any questions I can and to talk about it, but I just making it clear, this is yours. If something breaks like curb and gutter, it does fall back on you anyway.
How, how long is that median and which shortening median?
Well, you understand, if you look at the pictures right now, and you just take those big ones, if we shorten the median, that just means they're gonna pull out into that other lane of traffic and whip their tires around to come into it. So if it's northbound, the northbound traffic, they're gonna have to find their gap in order to come out, in order to get those wheels wrapped around, which is 100% common. You're at a stopped intersection, and they can see traffic coming, they're just waiting for their gap, and they just go further to come around and pull into it. And so in order to do that, they have to be able to have the median shorter to be able to whip that around and come around. And that's, that's very, very common in most of these sized streets, so that doesn't bother me at all.
I'm looking at this, Joe, and.
There is a fire hydrant right, right on this, or these trucks' tires are dragging up on the curb, there's a fire hydrant that, I mean, it's, trailers are close to it. And that's what community concern is.
Not in the median, there's, it's, it's on the street, so if we. Either, either if, yeah, on the side, so if we shortened or got rid of the median, that would take away the, could they be able to swing farther out from the, what's? Away from the fire hydrant? What's the, what's the homeowners association's opinion about removing the median?
We haven't actually expressly talked about removing the median altogether, but we were supporting the shortening.
Shortening it, okay. No, I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking of all possibilities right now, and just wondering if you guys have had the conversations.
And again, guys, I'm gonna encourage you to, obviously, the control of shortening the median they're doing is, you get opinions, you're never gonna get a full buy-in. It's whether you decide if it's an issue, the hydrant, for example, is a good comment, maybe you'll figure out, but it still can be hit regardless. If somebody doesn't swing wide enough, they don't wanna hit a car that might be on that other lane, they can still cut it short, but it hasn't happened today, is a good thing. So if it does happen, relocating the hydrant or it will break away, and you just replace the bolts, that's why it's meant. It won't be like the movies where water comes squirting out, but it is something that we do wanna make sure that it's not a constant theme, where you see in most communities where somebody cutting a corner takes out signal poles is most common thing that I typically see, and they break away. So avoiding that is obviously ideal, but at this point, like I said, I, I, it's up to you and being considered, but if I was gonna do something, I'd be definitely waiting to see Lagoon Road, that realignment, because at least you're doing work in the area anyway.
I guess I have a couple of questions, you know, this is the first time this has been brought to our attention. So Sean, I don't know, you know, I know your business has grown, and when did semis, the larger trucks start being used? You know, like I said, this is the first we've heard of this in all the time you've been there. Back when, and you were there when it was first built, we've had these discussions, and at that time, it was, yeah, we'll just have short, straight trucks. That intersection is no problem. We did make some concessions back when it was Dancing Goat was first built to widen the driveway to give more turning radius coming out with the driveway. But at that time, it was, you know, straight trucks will be used, they can make this turn.
Do you know who, who made that comment? I don't know if our business has ever functioned without having a semi trailer back there.
I mean, it would've been back when Travis was, you know.
Travis.
Okay, and, and that's just why I'm asking, because this is the first time this has been brought to our attention.
Yeah, and I think part of that could be because of the phases in which Dave Decker's apartments got built. So that first one was over on the severe drive, that side of, well, I guess I'll.
But further back, yeah.
And then they, you know, planted all the grass, laid the seed or sod, whatever they did. That side where the fire hydrant is, is where Dave Decker's grass continually gets ruined. We, we sent some pictures. I think that's probably why it hasn't started up until more recently when the.
The apartments are actually there.
So Joe, what would you think of 20 feet was taken out of that median?
Well, before I even tell you how much to take out, I'd show that same auto turn and then whipping all the way over there. I want to see what 20 feet do, I don't, we don't have the gas, we can just see what the alignment would do. And so, but taking 20 feet out and replacing it with what is the, the question? Sometimes we can have multiple curbs, or sometimes you can just put back pavement, but again, guys, that's like your discretion, and what you wanna do right now is jump over top of your curb and gutter and that, and ruin inside grass. Again, it's, it's an investment, so is it something we gotta do or something we wanna wait for? If we do put losing in, they're gonna have the ability to take their large semis and go right out and turn right on 134 and do the same thing and have plenty of room to turn. Yeah, we, we took an aerial and put this together, but we could easily show the hydrant and put a spot there and, and see how close it's getting. I do realize, you know, we show every single scenario, if someone stays tight and doesn't go all the way in the other lane, they could easily be getting closer, we can show what it makes to hit that too, so.
So, so let me, so the road, the road that this is on, if we go straight across, so on this intersection, if I travel east, that is where, and it's a straight shot to 134?
Straight and off, it's got some curves to it, but there's no.
Okay, but there's no turn, okay, all right. Only because, you know, my preferred, my preferred way when I, I go to the dentist, and my preferred way out is to go up and to get onto 134, and I have to take a bunch, some turns to get there. So that's why I was, I, I was trying to picture it in my head, but I think, yep.
Semis wouldn't have a hard time getting out of 134 if that was the same scenario we're presenting right now. Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's huge, we gotta understand, you got the taper lanes, you got that, and they still can wait, because to stop and pull up into that lane if they need to, just to make that turn.
Yeah, that is totally a straight shot.
Well, but that's obviously a choice that you have to make to allow that, but again, that's with the discretion of this board. And again, among the somebody that you have, it's still maybe probably limited to that one business.
The whole basis of that intersection with Lagoon was to accommodate Dancing Goat, to be able to go straight over to the rick houses and possible future bottling without having to go around. You know, that was the intent.
And, and they could take a right turn there, out of the vineyard, go right to Quick Trip and fill up with gas, and then they can, yeah. Perfect.
The completion of Lagoon Road and 134, would that fix this problem, or would?
Yeah, the question would be, how long would Dave Decker's dollar, if he's long giving $2,000?
It is the village's right of way though, it's not his.
Oh, well, who's, who's putting the straw at them right now?
He is, I mean, and he, the same as your right of way, you know, it is the village's right of way.
Guys, I've seen it before, and I don't propose it, but we can easily hardscape that terrace too and let them drive over the curb and, and put that there for their tires as well. And then you don't have any problem with grass, but then you're getting closer to that hydrant. There's, there's not, there's not a win-win exactly, but taking out the hydrant, moving it, or taking off the median. But to me, it's kinda like, at some point, you're gonna see if you wanna do it, and I, let's say it's shortened up 20 feet, and that's what it takes. I mean, the cost to go and do that and pair it up for that little thing, I wouldn't do that until you do, I mean, Highway 134, because you're gonna have contractors, and then you, you know, have that part of that project to reduce it. Because even if we do make the connection to 134, I still see some semis taking that turn. And they still might jump the curb, it just could be less frequent, because you know that's the biggest user, which is Dancing Goat, and they got a destination, the great old vineyard drive. And it's gonna be pretty easy for them to go straight, and I don't think it's gonna be for them to convince their drivers to do that. But it doesn't mean that's every semi, it doesn't mean it's ever gonna be perfect. A lot to think about, but that's why they're all tied together, guys.
Yes, they are.
Don't see any direction, I'm, I would, but it's up to you to see if there's any direction you wanna provide, but to me, I give you an update on everything, and then things like this auto turn shows you exactly what they're kind of alluding to. So I think it supports some of the things they've been doing.
Well, thanks for coming in and giving us an update, I don't know if there's much we can do right now.
I, I think what, I think what it does is, is it kinda just, what is that timeline for 134 intersection? And to me, there's probably more of an urgency, maybe, and I won't even say urgent yesterday, but now I'm, I was thinking we could put it off till 2026. And I'm thinking maybe it's gonna be 2025 again, so.
Fix the catalyst for, yeah.
Yeah, so now I'm thinking more towards 2025, back, back to there again, yeah. So you're, you were gonna put together like preliminary costs if we do this intersection, this could cost us?
I'm proposing, Lisa's already given me the direction, but we kinda saw this, provide to you an idea of what the cost is for the 134, so Lagoon intersection improvements, along with where you're currently with your TIF, because that's what we assume is the biggest catalyst and pay for it. And then also, I'm hearing, I'm gonna probably update this auto turn movement to show how much median at a minimum would have to be taken out in order for them to swing and come in and avoid hitting that curb and gutter. And so, and show you for hydrants. Those are the three things that I kinda heard that's gonna allow you to make decisions in the near future when you go through budgets for 2025.
Okay.
All right, I like it.
All right, now you're done with me, guys.
Like I said earlier, a lot of stuff going on.